The legal voters of the town of Middlebury and the county of Addison, the state of Vermont, are hereby warned and notified to meet at the Mary Hogan Elementary School Cafeteria Gymnasium, 201 Mary Hogan Drive, on Monday, November 6, 2017, at 7:00 PM for an informational meeting on Article 1, and on Tuesday, November 7, 2017, from 7:00 AM through 7:00 PM at the Town Office's 77 Main Street in Middlebury to vote by Australian ballot on Article 1 as provided by the Middlebury Town Charter. Article 1 reads as follows: "Shall the legal voters of the town of Middlebury approve the current deed of easement agreements as approved by the Select Board at their meeting on June 27, 2017, and convey three land easements, one behind the Town Office and Ilse Library, one near Mr. Up's Restaurant, and one on Mill Street to Vermont Gas Systems." As the warning indicates, there is no action being taken tonight. It's an informational meeting, but it is a legally-worn meeting for the voters of the town of Middlebury. And traditionally, as we begin our annual meetings, I invite your concurrence to allow a few non-residents to speak if need be, our Town Manager, Kathleen Ramsey, our Assistant Manager, Chris English, and Tom Murray is here from the Vermont Gas Systems as well in case there are any questions. Any objection to those folks speaking if need be? Next, has everyone signed in with our Clerk, Ann Webster, in the back? We're not using the formal checklist lines with A through F and G through P and all of that tonight because of the fairly modest attendance, but I do want to be sure that everyone signs in because it is a legally-worn meeting. So if you haven't, please see Ann in the back by the door, although she's tackled pretty everybody. I think you know our Selectmen, Heather Sealy, Nick Artem, Victor Nuovo, Susan Shashak, Ryan Carpenter, our Chairman, Farzad Khan, Laura Sermally, and we appreciate their attendance here as well. To begin, this is a petitioned article, which is different from what we customarily address at our Town Meetings. Means it was presented to the Board by a requisite percentage of our checklist, but I'll invite Brian Carpenter, the Chairman of the Board, to begin with whatever opening remarks he might want to make.
Thank you, Governor. In preparation for this meeting, I asked Kathleen if she could put together a summary of what led us to this point. And so with that, I think to make sure that we all have the same baseline, I'll read you through the summary and what we did as far as the Select Board's actions on the conveyance of easements to Vermont Gas. So on June 27, 2017, the Middlebury Select Board voted to grant three easements requested by Vermont Gas. The first easement will affect the municipal parking lot parcel located on the northern side of Cross Street, behind the Town Offices and Ilse Library Buildings. The second easement will affect the municipal parking lot located on the southerly side of the Cross Street, near Mr. Up's Restaurant. And the third easement will affect the municipal parking lot located on Mill Street. Each of the three easement deeds includes the following terms: Each easement will be 10 feet in width and 5 feet on either side of the pipeline as it is installed. If the town determines that the location of an easement unreasonably interferes with the present or future use of the town's land, then Vermont Gas will be obligated to relocate the easement at no cost to the town. In addition, if any of the easements are abandoned, then unless the Town and Vermont Gas agree otherwise in writing, Vermont Gas will be obligated to remove the pipeline and related infrastructure and return the area to its pre-removal condition, save normal wear and tear. The provisions described in this paragraph will terminate in the event that the Town conveys its property to a third party. The Select Board considered a citizen's recommendation that the Town seek compensation from Vermont Gas for the easements. In reviewing previous practice for granting easements to utilities, however both locally and statewide, the Board found that as utilities are not charged for easements for distribution lines, there was no basis for requesting compensation for Vermont Gas for these easements. So in our discussions, just to circle back on that, we differentiated from a transmission line that these were distribution lines serving some of our Town businesses and residences. And we also took into consideration that we didn't know exactly what we were going to do with the property, and that maybe we would want it at some later time, following a different path through that, through the town's property. And we negotiated for the obligation on Vermont Gas's part to move the line at their cost at a later date if we did determine we needed, that we wanted to use the property differently. So that's how, what the Town Select Board negotiated and how we looked at it. Then over the summer, the Town's Attorney worked with Vermont Gas to finalize the proposed terms of the easements, and on August 14, 2017, in accordance with the State Statute 24 VSA, Section 1061, the Middlebury Select Board gave public notice of the proposed terms of the easement deeds. Under the provisions of Section 1061, if a petition signed by 5% of the legal voters of the municipality objecting to the proposed conveyance is presented to the Municipal Clerk within 30 days of the date of posting and publication of this notice, the Select Board is required to hold a Town Meeting to consider the question of granting the easements pursuant to the terms and conditions negotiated by the Select Board. So we did receive a petition within the 30 days, and we warned for a meeting when it fit the schedule best, which is tonight. And because of Town policy that had been set some years ago, instead of voting tonight, it was, it was decided that the Town would have a, it's not a procedural policy, that we would have to do Australian ballot. And so that's, that's how we come to this action that we're going through. After the Town Meeting, the easement may be conveyed unless the majority of the voters vote to disapprove of the conveyance. Are there any questions of me at this time?
Well, let me invite George Cloke to speak on behalf of the petitioners, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you. I appreciate very much this opportunity to be here and to speak in this community that we all love and want to make good for everybody. And I want to begin by saying that it is Ross Conrad who should be here, speaking tonight, but because of prior business commitments, he had to be out of town and couldn't be here, and I'm sure he's disappointed about that. Ross is a member of the Middlebury community who dedicates a great deal of effort to help make Middlebury as good as it can be, and it's because of his writing a petition that hundreds of Middlebury voters flocked to sign that we are here tonight. Second, anyone who knows me, or has read my letters to the newspapers, or seen me at Public Service Board hearings, or at a number of demonstrations, knows that I never believed that a pipeline to bring gas to Middlebury was a good idea, or that Vermont Gas Systems was a fair and dependable public utility company living up to its, the claims of its advertiser. I am not alone in this. The Public Service Board, now renamed the Public Utilities Commission, has received petitions from many public advocacy groups, including ARP of Vermont, 350 Vermont, from a public interest group, the Conservation Law Foundation, and also from many concerned citizens. And these concerns range over cost estimates to safety issues, and some are still ongoing before the Public Utilities Commission. Over several years, hundreds of Vermont citizens have spent a great deal of effort to call Vermont Gas Systems to account. Thirdly, I want to say that I believe Middlebury has a very good Select Board. You do so much to deal with the issues that face us in this community in a way that is fair and serves the interests of all of us, and we, you deserve our thanks for that. So why are we here tonight? What Article 1 is about is an effort to ask our Select Board to bring Vermont Gas Systems back to the table in order to get the best deal possible for this utility company that is doing business in our town. The gas is here, whether we wanted it or not, and many of us think that Vermont Gas should pay its fair share. Reverend Barnaby Feeder, who serves the Unitarian Universal Society in Middlebury and is dedicating much of his own effort to these matters, would remind us that representatives of Vermont Gas have themselves described their product as a transitional fuel. And I believe, I remember also that it was called by Vermont Gas at some time a bridge fuel. Whichever, the idea was that it was going to be a transition towards some other kind of fuel. But when Vermont Gas described this as a transitional fuel and negotiated with the Town of Middlebury, they did not structure the deal with this Town to help the transition. Regardably, Reverend Feeder is not able to be here right now to speak to this, but he has allowed me to state his proposal. It is that the Select Board should be asked to turn down the free easement in order to reach a better agreement with Vermont Gas Systems. That better agreement would be that in lieu of charging for easements, the Town of Middlebury is to receive ongoing contributions from Vermont Gas Systems to fund, to a fund that will hasten the shift away from dependence on fossil fuels and toward dependence on greener energy options. I'm going to read that last statement again. The better agreement would be that in lieu of charging for easements, the Town of Middlebury is to receive ongoing contributions from Vermont Gas Systems to a fund that will hasten the shift away from dependence on fossil fuels and toward dependence on greener energy options. And we should remember that the state's plan, the conservation, the energy plan, I forget the term just now, but anyway, our plan is to reduce our use of fossil fuels by 2050 to only be 90% less than the 1990 use. It's a serious call to do serious reductions in fossil fuels we are using. So I believe that the proposal that this is represents the best interests of hundreds of Middlebury voters who signed the petition calling for this article to be placed before the people. And it is for this reason that I am voting no tomorrow, and asking everyone else in Middlebury, including our Select Board members and other community leaders, to give this serious consideration. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, George. I know that Susan Shashak, our Vice Chair, has some thoughts.
Thank you, Governor. I can't see all of you and read at the same time anymore. Both my dad and my husband worked for large telecommunications companies, and I've spent days working in the public right-of-way as a water system, excuse me, as a water system operator. Maybe it's passed along in my genes, but I have a deep understanding of how important it is to allow utilities to build and maintain access to their infrastructure throughout a community. For those of you who have lost your power last week, I bet you can relate. Keep in mind that it's in Middlebury's best interest to support this way of thinking, since much of its own infrastructure is located in the same public right-of-way and occasionally requires use of private land. There were several important aspects that I considered with the Vermont Gas easements. If the request had been for installing a transmission line, I would have considered a fee, since Vermont Gas has a history of paying for transmission line easements to other towns. This makes sense because a transmission line has a much larger impact than a distribution line, but these requests were for distribution lines only. If the request had been to cross land that was untouched by any other utilities, I would have considered a fee for creating this new impact. But this request was to follow the same narrow line already granted to several other utilities on the selected properties. Those utilities asked for and received their easements from the Town for free in previous years, so it is fair to do the same for Vermont Gas. Let me be clear, I am no fan of Vermont Gas, and I voted against supporting their expansion to Middlebury. But it is wrong to use my power as a Select Board member to penalize anyone, or in this case, a company, because of my personal feelings. That is a path I do not care to go down. Thank you.
Well, at this point, the floor is open for public comment, and it might be easier just to come up, line up if there are others who would like to be heard near the microphone. Ordinarily, we alternate between those in favor of and opposed to a proposal, but we'll see how it goes. So go right ahead. I want to make sure we have your name for the record.
My name's Alice Epple, so I'm in Middlebury. I live in Middlebury, at Preston.
That's good.
Um, I feel like wherever there's a pipeline, there's a potential for an explosion. He's checking it. But that's not on my piece of paper. There's not a single good reason to approve free easements to Vermont Gas, and there are a number of reasons why the current easement agreements are a bad deal for Middlebury. Part of the reason such a lousy deal was approved by the Middlebury Select Board was because Vermont Gas Systems gave the Select Board the impression that none of the other communities they serve ever asked them to pay for easements to use Town Land for distribution lines, and that Middlebury would be an outlier if we required easement payments. I've contacted numerous cities and towns, both Addison and Chittington County, and not one city or Town Manager can remember Vermont Gas ever asking for an easement to install distribution lines on municipal land. And that would be Ross Conrad, not me personally. It turns out that the company almost always uses the road right-of-way when installing distribution lines, as they have already done at no charge throughout Middlebury. Vermont Gas hardly ever has to pay for easements to install distribution lines across municipal property because they hardly ever ask to do so, not because it is commonly allowed and business as usual among other cities and towns. Vermont Gas has already paid for easements in 2014 and 2016 to install their distribution lines on property owned by Middlebury College and a couple of local businesses. Why are they treating the Town of Middlebury any differently? The primary reason municipalities have traditionally allowed utilities to have access to public land at no charge is because the services they provide greatly improve the quality of life for its citizens. If Green Mountain Power were unable to hook up to buildings downtown, for example, there is no other company that could take its place and provide electric energy to those locations. In the case of Vermont Gas, however, most customers they seek to reach with these easements are already enjoying the benefits of gas energy sourced from propane. Rather than greatly improving their quality of life, Vermont Gas will be offering an alternative gas fuel source that can save these folks money, perhaps. That is all well and good. However, as far as I know, when a company provides the opportunity for residents and landowners to save a few dollars, it does not qualify that company to receive special treatment from the Town, such as free access to profit from the use of public lands for decades to come. The Town should be consistent in how it treats our business community. Vermont Gas representatives have also suggested that they will be paying taxes on the pipelines they install. Charging for easements in addition is somehow unnecessary or unfair. Unlike the property taxes that we pay that go up every year, the taxes Vermont Gas will pay on its pipeline property is allowed to be reduced every year through depreciation of the pipeline's value, so that after 20 to 30 years, they bottom out at only 30% of the pipeline's value. This is despite the fact that Vermont Gas can expect to use and profit from the pipeline for 50 years or more. The taxes the Town will receive for the pipeline won't even cover the real value of the pipeline to the company, let alone make up for the loss of value experienced by the town's properties that will be encumbered by these easements. In reality, Vermont Gas should make payments related to the amount of gas that passes through the pipeline every year, rather than the doctored value of the pipeline itself. Given that Middlebury ranks in the top 10 of Vermont municipalities with the highest property taxes in the state, we should be looking to develop as many alternative income streams as possible before any more Middlebury property taxpayers reach the end of their rope. Some have expressed concern that if Vermont Gas is required to pay for Town easements, it will cause the rates that gas customers pay to increase. Thanks to a memorandum of understanding that the Public Service Board worked out with Vermont Gas, natural gas ratepayers are only on the hook for the first $134 million of the new pipeline project. Since the cost of the total project has already reached over $160 million, ratepayers will not have to absorb the easement costs. Rather, the stockholders of Gas Metro, the Canadian company that owns Vermont Gas, will simply receive a slightly smaller dividend check. The state of Vermont has the goal of transitioning to renewable energy sources, reducing the use of fossil fuels, and the production of greenhouse gas emissions. Meanwhile, the U.S. EPA recently admitted that they have been grossly underestimating the amount of potent GHG methane that the gas industry releases through the production, processing, storage, transmission, and use of natural gas. Additionally, several recent studies have found that so much fugitive methane is released throughout the natural gas chain supply, from ground to customer, that natural gas ends up being just as harmful to the environment and damaging to the climate as coal. To allow Vermont Gas to profit from new fossil fuel infrastructure on Town-owned land for the next 50 years without asking for compensation smacks of corporate welfare. Instead, let's look after ourselves here, and ask for a fair price for the easement that will benefit the Town. Put it into a fund that will help us shift toward the use of planet-friendly energy options. Let's build that bridge and not just talk about it.
All right. Go ahead. Go ahead.
My name is Margaret Cloke. I'd like to share some thoughts with the other Middlebury voters that are here, and as well as our Select Board members. I've been part of a large group who have been opposed to the Vermont Gas project for approximately five years now. Going through this process to save Vermont from more fossil fuels has been exhausting, eye-opening, also depressing and painful. Watching Vermont Gas function as a nasty neighbor through many towns, and the way many folks have been treated and had their lives and properties uprooted for the last five years has been painful. They have had and still have lawsuits against them for misdeeds. They have fought many, many landowners whom they have used eminent domain by bullying if the landowner did not agree to what they offered. I absolutely have no respect for this way of doing business. Now to the business at hand. I believe the Town of Middlebury has been more than generous to Vermont Gas. The gas is here, so be it. But as taxpayers, I believe that we have a say in handing over three parcels of Town Land without compensation. This is our land and managed by our Select Board. I feel it is right to insist on fair compensation. I hope tomorrow's vote reflects this concern, and that the Select Board will carefully consider their response. And I will vote no on this issue. Thank you.
Other comments?
My name's Rick Buck. I own Mr. Up's Restaurant. Unfortunately, I just found out about this on Friday morning, so I've been trying to find out about some facts and be filled in on all this. I'm here to represent my restaurant, my employees, and the fact that gas is going to save me a lot of money. As far as some of the issues that you've said, having people uproot their land, I know this much too well with the Cross Town Bridge, we almost went out of business, we had our land taken from us, the Town barely helped us at all. And I feel for the people that have lost their land for, for gas easements or whatever it is, but you keep saying there's no compensation, but as, from what I've been told, Vermont Gas has to pay property taxes on these easements, which is much greater than the cost of the easement. And that goes on year after year after year. So if it's a monetary issue, it seems to me that it's a no-brainer that you would accept the property tax on this. I obviously hope that this goes through. It seems like there's a lot of opposition, and I just wanted to be heard. Thanks.
Frank?
Hi, my name is Frank Wicker. I may be the only person in the room who is actually neutral on this issue, but I have a few questions. And that is, how is this different from the easements or whatever that allows the Vermont Gas to lay their distribution lines around, along through public roadways?
So they have a work-in-the-right-of-way permit for all of the gas lines that are, have been installed already. These are not across right-of-ways, they're across Town-owned land.
But who is granted, is that a, the right-of-way or the ability to lay their transmission lines along the roadway, is that something that's guaranteed by the Public Service Board, by the state of Vermont? Is that something that the Town has granted, or?
The Town has granted the work-in-the-right-of-way permit, subject to certain conditions negotiated by the Select Board several years ago.
Right. So, so the same issue could have been raised at that time, but, but that's essentially a fait accompli, and so we're, we're at the very end of this process, and so this is simply working at a small amount of distribution line to be laid across land that happens to be owned by the Town. Now, my next question, and I should know this, but roughly, what's the Town budget every year?
General Fund budget's $11 million. All funds is about the $14 million.
All right. So, so as I understand, the most optimistic view of what we might get from these easements is a few thousand dollars. So compared to 11 million, 14 million compared to what we're talking about, and so just doing a little mental arithmetic, this appears to be less than 1/10 of 1%. So let's suppose that a taxpayer pays $5,000 worth of taxes, then this might save everyone at most a few dollars a year, compared to the saving, which is going to be quite substantial, to folks like Mr. Up's Restaurant, and to the Town itself, and the Ilse Library. the elderly library and the town offices for getting their fuel for less money. In fact, to the town, it might turn out to be a wash, it seems to me. So it really seems to me that the purpose of this petition is simply to stick a finger into the eye of Vermont Gas. So I think that it's important simply to recognize that, that this really has no real practical value that's going to greatly impact us. And I guess I'd furthermore go a little bit farther to suggest that for people to turn out in force against this simply because they object to fossil fuels and to have driven automobiles to the meeting is a little bit hypocritical.
Other comments?
Those of us who have been asking for a no vote on this so that the select board can renegotiate what is happening are not at this point asking that the easements be denied. We expect that they will go through and that the gas company will serve the people in the immediate area with their product. The main point at this point of anything I had to say is that we believe, and there's a host of people in this community, in the state, across the country, Bill McKibben, if anybody listens to him, believe that we must find a way to get off fossil fuels sometime. And the Conservation Energy Plan, which I tried to refer to before, the state is calling for us to reach certain goals over the next seventeen years, over the next years to 2050. And this was a forward-looking plan for this state. So what we're asking for now, and I credit Reverend Barnaby Feeder with the idea, is not a denial or a charge for the easement. What we're asking the gas company to do is to live up to what they were saying, that this is a transition fuel and that we need to find a way to use less fossil fuels in the future. And we're asking, I want the select board to ask the gas company to contribute to a fund in an annual rate that will help our community get off of the use of fossil fuels and go for other renewable energy plans. So I hope that explains it. I take serious exception with a notion written by Angelo Lynn in the newspaper and repeat it here again, that we want to stick it in the face of the gas company. This is a serious matter, and there are many hundreds of us in this state who have been working on this for years, trying to understand what is best for our town and our state and our region. So I hope people will take this seriously. I don't know what will happen, but I hope there's a chance that we may find a better way to get off fossil fuels and find a way forward, and that Vermont Gas Systems will help pay for it for the privilege of doing business in our town.
Good evening, folks. My name is Stephen Terry. I live on Sheldon Lane, which, under the current plans, we won't have the opportunity to have natural gas. Frankly, I wish we did, but I am urging, and I will be voting yes tomorrow, and my reasons are this. I understand the deep feelings that some people have about getting off fossil fuel for many years, and I'm not in any way here speaking on behalf of Green Mountain Power, but I worked there for many years. And, you know, there are a lot of people in Vermont who also don't like nuclear power, don't like wind-generated power, and I think if we go down the road, that we will be making, in effect, fossil fuel or other choices about the energy we use in this proceeding, we will be establishing a precedent that I think, candidly, I was quite impressed by Angelo Lynn's view of this. I think it would be a real mistake for the town of Middlebury. I would urge us all to remember that the 2012 town plan and the current update of the town plan calls for, in effect, a balanced future as far as the uses of energy. There is a very strong tilt in the town plan that we must move towards more renewables. One of the features of, especially in Middlebury, that the pipeline will bring is that our friends at Middlebury College and a farm family in Salisbury are developing in what's called renewable natural gas. Now, the folks from Vermont Gas can probably talk more about this, but this is a new strategy to use, frankly, cow manure and food waste to generate what they call renewable natural gas. And Vermont will be one of the earliest places in the U.S. to do this on a retail perspective. So I think we are moving in the right direction. We also want Middlebury downtown to be strong, vibrant, and we would urge that we are, I think there are people talking about new broadband building in Middlebury. I would hate that if we voted no on this, that it would send a message that we in this town are going to be picking and choosing what kind of infrastructure we want based on how, whether or not it fits with our own personal view. So I think the select board, in its wisdom, made the right choice. I was quite, I read Susan's comment before, and we heard it this evening. I think she made the right choice, that you can't vote on these kinds of matters based on your own personal view. So I congratulate you for your comments. I hope we will support the select board. I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's the right thing for the future of this town, and I hope that others will agree. Thank you.
Just so the audience is clear, my point of view comes from a business point of view in terms of a transaction between a private utility and the town of Middlebury, one that has the goal of making a profit on delivering a product to the people of Middlebury, and the other to do the best in the interest of the entire town of Middlebury. So I have a few questions. Now, it seems to me that Vermont Gas has made some one hundred and sixty-three agreements in rights-of-way to get to Middlebury, or maybe including Middlebury. And in that, I had the impression for a while that they never had an agreement with a municipality who would charge them to go have a right-of-way through their town property. You all know that's not the case, I assume. The town of Heinsburg, as I read from last year, they had, of course, quite an issue over their community park. And they went from an agreement that gave seventy-five thousand dollars to the town of Heinsburg to go under the park or through it, I'm not sure which initially. And now they are at an agreement to pay the town of Heinsburg two hundred and fifty thousand for that right-of-way. So there's certainly precedence for municipalities in obtaining appropriate sums or fair sums for rights-of-way. So as I read the easements in the online, it seems to me that this arrangement that the town has with Vermont Gas seems to be a partnership of sorts, with Vermont Gas having certain rights and the town having certain rights. Vermont Gas, once they get that right-of-way, seems to have it forever, from what I've read, except for certain conditions where it's abandoned and so forth. So it seems to me that both parties, the town and Vermont Gas, should benefit for that. So I was curious, was compensation ever discussed?
Mark, just to clarify, we knew about the Heinsburg payment, but that's a transmission line, it's not a distribution line, and it's a major transmission line that goes down through Heinsburg. And we differentiated between them, and as we discussed, we had quite a discussion and a lot of questions of Vermont Gas. We actually made Vermont Gas come back several times, and it came down to the fact that we saw that effectively it's a handful of businesses that that distribution line services. And we wanted, we weighed the vibrancy of the downtown in keeping businesses competitive and those services that we can provide as a town. When we looked at the nominal value of the right-of-way that was provided to us by our town assessor, roughly twenty-five hundred dollars, knowing that we were going to get a few hundred thousand dollars' worth of taxes, they, Vermont Gas is now a local business for us. They are doing business in Middlebury, and they're paying significant taxes. And so that was all part of the discussion. And, you know, frankly, I think that some people, some of the select board had a very difficult time with it, because not everyone on the select board is in favor of Vermont Gas. Now, I have followed, I testified in the Goodrich Farm project, because I think that's a real viable project, and I'm glad to see that finally signed off and moving forward. And if we did not have the Vermont Gas infrastructure, we would not have this renewable natural gas opportunity in our backyard. And as that continues to grow, not only does it help solve the food waste issue that we have, but it will provide those of us who want to do the right thing and consume renewables to pay for that, just like cow power through the Green Mountain Power program. And so, yes, that was part of the discussion.
Did the board ever consider such an arrangement where Vermont Gas would provide gas at a reduced rate for all of the municipal facilities and any conversion to it? As so money wouldn't have to change hands for the rate, but the town could have the opportunity, if they so chose, to have gas for the police station, the fire station, the rec park, and the town offices, and the public works facility?
That's a little different issue. You know, when we're dealing with utilities, we don't necessarily hold them hostage, serving another one of our townspeople for, and I do think that as we look at the town's energy use, that's a real possibility that we will try to negotiate something with them, but, you know, we've really pushed to underground utilities in the downtown, and I don't see how we can differentiate between Comcast and Green Mountain Power and Vermont Gas. And Vermont Gas needs to underground, the others don't. And we certainly want them all undergrounded. That's at a cost for those utilities. It beautifies our downtown, it cleans it up, and so we haven't charged, and we do have other utilities through the same right-of-way.
It just makes sense that there should be some kind of specified benefit that the town could point to that would show that we are doing all the things that you're trying to do for the infrastructure and the business of Middlebury, but that the town and the taxpayers could see a benefit from that right-of-way. And then if I could go to the right-of-way, I didn't see in the easements any specific reference to a requirement for horizontal drilling. Is that something that's expected to happen without it being specified?
I'm not sure I understand. Mr. Murray, can you?
Tom Murray, want to come on up here so we get it on the white?
Good evening, folks. I'm Tom Murray with Vermont Gas. First of all, before I say anything, thank you, select board and the townspeople, for your opinions, and I'm pleased to be here, we're pleased to be in town. As Brian pointed out, we are now a local business, and we're serving, we've got a couple hundred customers on, we've got a couple hundred more that'll be turned on soon, so we're excited to serve the town. As it relates to this question of how the pipe is going to be installed, there'll be a combination of open trench, and we'll do some directional drilling depending on where the location is in this particular easement. We prefer to do the horizontal, we don't have to do as much digging, but there are certain areas we have to do open trench. There are a lot of other utilities there, and that tends to lend itself to doing open trench, because you can basically hand dig it around the other utilities, so those are the things you have to be careful of. You have to be careful drilling when you've got other utilities underground.
I just think that that's important, because that obviously has an effect on how the surface is going to look afterward if you use open trench. And I just seen, and I'm not sure, I'm sure Vermont Gas is responsible, but are there requirements around what that needs to look like after they complete their open trench work? And I just didn't see, it says it has to be brought back to a suitable, whatever that means, surface, I think. But I think those kinds of things need to be very clearly specified in any easement agreement. That's a personal opinion about that.
Yeah, I understand the point.
And what is the size of the pipe that would be put in the ground in those areas?
Two inch.
Yeah. I think those are my questions, but I really think the board should really reconsider about the agreement, either with some compensation or an arrangement on fuel in the future for any conversion that we would make with some kind of specific reference to that. Thank you.
Other comments?
Victoria Dwin. I've been away recently, and I only just read Thursday's paper, and so I'm wondering... I've been away recently and I only just read Thursday's paper, and so I'm wondering, is the town considering using natural gas for the library, for the town offices, and other public buildings? Is that what, are we one of those customers?
Victoria, we are a potential customer. We haven't gone there yet, but the lines aren't in.
Well, currently, our buildings are not, they don't have the equipment for natural gas, so if we were to convert to natural gas, what are the conversion costs to the town for these buildings that might change? I mean, that seems, that should be a consideration because my understanding is it's really expensive to convert your systems to natural gas. So maybe part of an agreement with Vermont Gas is that they should pay for the conversion. Or there's also, the rates for natural gas are low now, but it seems, from what I've heard over the last couple of years, it's very likely they're going to go up. And will we really be saving money in the end when rates go up? I know that's an unknown, but maybe if we're going to have some kind of deal with Vermont Gas, that we get the prices as they are now. And, but most importantly, the town in its town plan and the state has a goal of getting away from fossil fuels, and I don't think we should be participating in increasing the use of fossil fuels. We should be looking at ways of supporting solar and other possibilities if natural gas ends up producing more methane than what we're getting from other fuels right now, all the way along through its production and transmission use. And I don't see that as a way to move us away from, into a cleaner energy system in the future. So I would hope the town would not participate in Vermont Gas and using its product. I think it goes against what our goals are in the future for the futures.
Other thoughts, comments? Laura.
Friends, I want to thank you for coming and for those watching tonight. I think it's a very difficult issue. I really respect how complex the issue is. You know that I also have been opposed to the frac gas pipeline coming into Middlebury and through the region. And I have to echo Susan's comments that even though I feel that way, I believe that we need to be consistent in how we treat utilities and their access to our rights-of-way and our property. So I would hope that, as Victoria said, we would choose to work toward reducing our fossil fuel footprint. And we are, as you know, we've just constructed a town office building that's net zero. Our rec center is extremely well constructed, so it'll use the minimum amount, it is admitted, you know, some fossil fuel there. And I know that a lot of my neighbors are looking at conversion to natural gas because they need to replace their heating systems and they do see that it currently is more affordable, it does burn more cleanly, so in terms of air quality, we do see that. That said, as you've heard, methane is a very serious greenhouse gas, and we are learning more and more about that. And so I do find myself very conflicted about this. It's very hard. And I really hope that our fossil fuel companies, including Vermont Gas, will be partners in transitioning to cleaner solutions. And as was mentioned by Steve, you know, that we do see a possibility for biogas being received in this. Now, it's still methane and it could still leak, so we still are left with that issue. But at least we're making some effort to capture that better than we currently are. And as you know, we have a wastewater treatment facility that hopefully can be converted to receive, I'm hoping that that has potential to be used as a renewable energy source. So I abstained, you know, when we voted on this for that reason, because it's just really hard on my heart to support a fossil fuel. But I understand that as a select board, we have to make policy that's consistent, and unless we're going to charge everybody, you know, I don't see that it's fair to charge Vermont Gas. That said, I think Mark made a good point about seeing if Vermont Gas could help us if we were going to go in that direction. And I hope that we can find other solutions, but it would be good, you know, to know that we would have a partner in reducing our energy expenses and moving to cleaner energy sources. Thanks.
I'm Barbara Clearbridge, I live in Middlebury. And I don't think Vermont Gas is comparable to the other utilities. I don't think it's just another utility. It's my understanding that our legislature has banned the fracking of gas in Vermont because it is so toxic. So this utility is bringing us something we have banned the production of, that's different. And it's also bringing us something that we have written, that we don't want to be using anymore in a certain number of years. So again, that's, it's not the same as any other utility. There are these larger issues connected with it that have to do with not just short-term gain, but our integrity as a state. This is what we say we want, this is what we say we don't want. It's difficult sometimes to make our actions fit our ideals, but that's what this is about to me.
Yes.
Hello, I'm Barry Bailey from Salisbury. And I want to thank you for having this forum because our town is in the next phase. And so we're watching what folks do in various towns.
Barry, let me just interrupt briefly since it's a meeting of the voters of Middlebury. Any objection to hear Ms. Bailey speak?
One thing I do want to mention before I speak about this issue is when there was mention of the biofuel, the methane digester in Salisbury, which our town totally endorsed without any objections whatsoever, that came to a very sharp halt when Middlebury College took away the funding for 75% of that. And unless something different has happened in the last few months, that's still the situation. So you can't always rely on these things, even though I would love to have, it's on my road. So we really need to ensure some of these things that will enhance. What I come away from with Salisbury is that I'm on the Conservation Commission, and we get questions from people about the next phase, and they're saying, "Well, I'm only, if they go through my land, I'm only going to get paid the narrow width, but my whole property is impacted and my house value is impacted." What is the town going to do, or Vermont Gas going to do for us? And so I was very interested in the idea that was presented tonight, to have the gas company contribute to something that the whole town could benefit from, which would be this fund for moving to a renewable future, in that no matter how long this bridge fuel is, we still at some point have to move forward on that. So thanks to this forum, I've heard about this idea, and thank you for hearing me.
I just want to say that I agree with a lot of what you all are saying. I forget the gentleman's name that's heading up the opposition, but most of what you said about green, green energy, I agree with. I actually own 150 kilowatt solar array that powers my restaurant and my house, and I'm all for that. I don't necessarily think fossil fuels are great, but at this particular time, Vermont Gas is giving us an opportunity to save money, and if you want to save that money as the town, we can put it towards other ideas in the long run. Very little of what has been talked about tonight pertains to the article that is up for vote tomorrow. Like hardly anybody's talked about that. So please tomorrow, vote on the article, not on your belief on greenhouse gases or whatever else your belief is. Thanks. Laura.
I respect and really understand that point, and it is about, for a lot of people, the impact of this particular fossil fuel as a public safety issue. And I think that's why a lot of people are struggling with it, you know, because we're talking about what we've learned about methane leaks and potential explosions. So it's a different, it's a different situation than a Comcast line, you know, so that's why it is hard for people. I understand your point, but I think we're not looking at the same thing as other utilities.
Gentleman behind you first.
Bill Schneider, a Middlebury resident of Buttauf Acres, which will be served by the pipeline. I think that the last remark about please vote tomorrow, when you vote tomorrow, vote on what the article is before us, because if I understand it, a no will prevent the select board from reconsidering this issue in the context of the current timeframe. Is that a true statement? Well, I've been reading the press, and that's what the press says. A vote yes will give the select board an opportunity to revisit. No, okay, it's the other way. Well then, so an opportunity for the select board to revisit the issue of whether or not to ask for a different arrangement regarding easements, is you should vote no. Is that, okay. So clarifying that here, I came confused at the meeting, I'm glad I'm here. It also seems to me that we're splitting hairs as to whether Vermont Gas is like all other utilities, and I'm not going to take on that issue, but for each person to decide, we've heard lots of technical points of view on that, as we have about distribution versus transmission. I would like to come down on the side of our select board representing all of the residents of Middlebury and seeing that there is an opportunity to improve the arrangement with Vermont Gas. And if indeed it is setting a new precedent, it may be time to establish a new precedent in that recently, we have a goal for the town to become carbon neutral by 2050, and there is a way to do business with our partners, as already suggested in the case of Vermont Gas, to further those goals for all of the citizens and for the stated goals of the town. So with that, I'm going to leave my earlier confusion to the clarity it's gotten, and vote your conscience. Thank you.
I'm not sure it's necessary for me to say anything anymore, but I was feeling that there was some confusion about what the issue is. So, oh, I thought there was some confusion, and I don't know if it's been cleared up, so just to make sure. This article that we're voting on is, should the select board revisit the, wait a minute, don't, never mind, I don't want to get confused about that. It does get confusing. Anyway, my position is voting no on it, so that they will revisit it and see if they can come up with a better deal for us. But it's not to prevent Vermont Gas from giving their fuel out or doing whatever they do, because that's a done deal. So we're not, we're not going there, we're not trying to stick it to anybody. I don't like people projecting motivations and thoughts about how I got here onto me.
Margaret.
After listening to everybody and hearing feelings, is it, you getting it? Can you hear me? And personal choices versus choices for the good, I don't see how people can separate them. Your personal, your personal feelings are what they, how you believe, and you vote that way, you function that way. You can't turn your heart upside down for something that you really, truly believe in. And I'd like people to think about that. I think that's important. It's who we are that has us believe the way we do, and I think that's really important. And it's okay to have these personal feelings, and I understand it, like if you're on the board, which you are, obviously, that's who you are, and it's okay. Don't feel like you have to go along with the crowd if that's something you sincerely believe is not the way it is going. So please think that way with your heart.
Heather.
I don't want to put Vermont Gas on the spot for a question you may not be prepared to answer, but one concern I have is that if the town chooses to not allow easements to go forward, are you willing to come back and renegotiate? And before you answer, just want to point out that in my own business, if somebody told me no, I would be reluctant to come back and want to renegotiate after you said no. So I am thinking in terms of the businesses and community members that will benefit from the service of these lines. And if you could comment, so I might know whether you're willing to talk with us further or you would need to evaluate that at a later time. Thanks.
Tom.
I think there is some confusion around this. The question that's being put forth is, yes, is to approve the easements, as the select board has approved them back in July, no, is to basically not approve those easements. So we will respect the voters' wishes. So if we get a no vote, you know, we're going to be getting a pretty clear message from the folks, but the people that are harmed in that are going to be the customers that are not going to be able to get the service, the customers that you've heard from tonight that want the service. Is that a statement that'll go on forever? Hard to say. I think we would, we're going to focus on the areas that we can go and avoid these kind of controversies, and we had hundreds of people signing up for the service. And there may be a time in the future when we do revisit these easements, but in the short term, I think we would take a pause and focus on Virgens and other parts of Middlebury that we've got hundreds of customers ready to connect. So that's the short answer.
Laura.
I actually live by the airport, so I have nothing to do with... I actually live by the airport, so I have nothing to do with Vermont Gas. I don't think I'm going to see them for another few years. We don't even get Comcast where I live, so, but, but I've heard several people in the past few weeks, they approached me and for and against Vermont Gas. And me being a selectman, I have to be very sensitive to everybody's opinion. People have a lot of feelings about this. My question to you, like I asked you at the select board meeting also, if you had paid the private business owners and landowners, why, you want to be a good neighbor, you are a local business now, so why don't you make that gesture and offer something? Make the, come back to the table and make a negotiation. I agree with the gentleman that there should be some kind of a negotiation as far as conversion, the cost of conversion, or some, make a gesture, because you're going to be a local business for us. And because you're saying that Vermont Gas might take a pause, I don't agree with that. Maybe you should come back to us. I'm a businessman. If somebody comes and offers, they say, "I want to buy 100 of these, can you give me a deal?" I'll give them a deal if I'm on their business.
Tom.
Thank you. A couple of things on that. The, in the easement, as was pointed out earlier, we agreed to, to locate for future, that, that had a value to it in the future. It also, we also agreed to compensate the town for legal expenses related to this. Keep in mind, we did have a vote of the select board supporting this. We look at the property tax revenues associated with this thing, it's been talked about. You know, if we have to delay this for two, three, four, five years of putting this in, you will have far and away a lost money essentially on the transaction, essentially by, by delaying. And will, as, there has been a longstanding precedent to not charge utilities in the town of Middlebury for distribution. We would hope that we'd be treated like all the other utilities. We provide a valuable service, we're a public utility in the state of Vermont, and we've got 50,000 customers that rate our customer satisfaction at over 95% in, in, in our other counties, and we look forward to adding Addison County to that list of, of happy customers. So we provide an enormous amount of benefit in terms of, just in town alone, we've saved millions, millions of dollars in businesses. We're going to pay 200 to $250,000 a year in property taxes each year. I think we're a valuable member of the community, and hopefully you folks will appreciate that as we, as we get our services rolled out.
Just a couple people have spoken twice already. Let me just see if there's anyone else who wants to offer something? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Molly Pizer, and I'm from Moncton, so Vermont Gas may object because they know that I'm opposed to the pipeline.
Well, I'll make sure the voters don't object. Okay to have a Monctonian speak or...
This is really Middlebury business, Governor?
Well, it is.
We would normally invite in those who need to speak as part of it, but we don't make, this is not supposed to be a referendum on Vermont Gas.
I, I understand that. I'd actually just like to clarify a few facts that were mentioned this evening that I think are important for voters to know.
Let me be sure I'm, the voters are okay with her speaking.
Jim, could we ask...
I think we should let the voters speak first, and then if there's time, then we'll talk.
The chairman's point is valid. This is not a forum, this is a warrant legal meeting of the voters of Middlebury, and they have discretion to invite others to speak if, if they want.
Can I ask a question, Jim? Can we find out if there are any more from any other towns that want to speak, or is she the only one left? Because that would make a difference if they're going to, if there's going to be a lot, then I would answer differently than just one.
Any other non-residents wishing to speak tonight? I guess not.
Then I would be, I would be okay.
Okay? Not everybody's, but most are okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so there are just three things that were said this evening that I have concerns about in terms of facts. And I am opposed to the pipeline. My family did actually settle with Vermont Gas, and I think we have a positive relationship since then in the way that we have been working together. At the same time, I think there are three things that voters deserve to know. One is that permits for working in a right-of-way are different than an easement for working in a right-of-way. And perhaps Vermont Gas could confirm this, they have their right-of-way manager here. But in a state highway or in a public highway, an easement is not necessary. However, a work permit is necessary. And I believe, and I think that Karen Kentucky can probably confirm whether I'm correct or not, that the parking lots are different because they are not a public highway, and therefore an easement is necessary. The two situations are not the same. The gentleman who asked about that, I wanted to be sure he had that information. Secondly, I'm not sure that it would be fair to call the term related to Vermont Gas moving the pipe, should you decide to develop the parking lot in the future as a negotiated term. Why? Because there's a 1971 Vermont Supreme Court decision in a case between Vermont Gas and the city of Burlington. Burlington told Vermont Gas that they needed to move their pipeline out of a road because they were going to reconfigure the roads. Vermont Gas sued them for damages to compensate them for the cost of moving the pipeline. The Vermont Supreme Court said that a town can tell a utility to move its infrastructure if it should decide to use its land differently in the future, land that has been dedicated to a public use. Now, it's very possible that something has changed since then. From everything that I've read, it hasn't changed. And so I'm not sure that this is something that the select board actually negotiated as an extra benefit to the town. I think it's just, it would have been in there anyway. The last thing is, and I think that he simply misspoke, the representative from Vermont Gas said that 50,000 customers rated Vermont Gas on their customer service as excellent. That's not true. Vermont Gas does a sample survey of its customers each year, I believe it's 300 if I recall properly. It depends on who answers the phone or who mails in back a card, et cetera. They didn't ask every customer. 95% of their customers did not actually say that. I'm not suggesting that 95% of the sample didn't say it, but I just think it's important to be clear and to be accurate about what the information is. That's all. Thanks.
Any other comments? Yes, sir?
Governor. Select Board.
My name is David Pistilli, I'm a Middlebury resident. I am a sample size of one. I'm a Vermont Gas customer. I'm very satisfied with Vermont Gas. They're finally serving my home after five years of me having heard after I had first moved here that there was going to be natural gas next year. And year after year, there was always one obstruction after another that prevented them from getting their gas to my home, but now it's finally here, and I'm very satisfied with it. I came this evening to express support for the select board. We elect them to do a very difficult job for our town. We pay them precious little to do this. We make enormous demands of their time, of which this meeting is yet another example. We would not be, I, I, they, they did what they did in this case, in my estimate, in the best interests of the townspeople and the town proper of Middlebury. Many of them, I mean, they, they made this decision honestly and openly, and they made it after considering the input from many of us, many of you perhaps in this audience. So thank you, Select Board, for representing us, I think, in the very best manner possible and making a, in my estimate, an excellent decision to try to move this, this project forward. I will vote yes tomorrow. I would encourage others to do the same so that Mr. Upps can finally get his natural gas like I have my natural gas. Thank you, Governor.
Anyone else? Margaret, go ahead.
I agree with the last speaker that our select board is amazing. They do a lot of work, and they have our best interests at heart. As a voter who helped elect you, I'm all glad you're here. The concern I have is listening to Tom speak for Vermont Gas. It reminds me of the article I read in the Free Press from John Flowers had written this week that sounded like if everything didn't go Vermont Gas's way, they would pull back on putting this gas down there. Nobody's talking about taking the easement away, as far as I know. This is a discussion about whether they should be, people want to vote on it based on whether they're going to be compensated or not. The voters need to know whether we're going to be treated fairly. But this sounded to me, sorry, Tom, like we're not going to play if you don't agree with us. We're, we're holding all the cards here, and the select board has to do what we say or the, the town's going to lose out. And I have a real problem with that attitude. So I want the select board to think about that when they go forward.
Heather.
Mr. Chairman, can I request to make a motion that we close the discussion and move the question?
Well, a motion to adjourn is always in order. I think I just heard one. Seconded by Nick Ardom. It's not debatable, so all those in favor of adjourning the meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Foes, no? The ayes have it, and the meeting stands adjourned.